Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming this evening. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, I'd like to call the order. The Board of Education meeting, November 19, 2019, 7:30 at the Saranoke Intermediate School. And our first is the Pledge of Allegiance. Josh, would you mind leading us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. Okay, our first order of business is our recognition. At this time, I'll have Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Chair. And members of the board, I'm excited tonight. We have one, two, three, four, five, six stars of the month. I will say your name, and then if you can come up, I'll read a little bit about you. Superstars, all right? And then you just wait up here until everybody gets here. First, we have Randy Gray. Miss Gray is very involved with her students in helping them achieve success. She is always updating and involving the parents, which is very much appreciated in this fast-paced world we live in. I wish I had a teacher like her. Now, not me, I do, because I went to her classroom. I don't know if you saw, I tweeted out, it was Halloween, and they were learning about bones, and then here she comes, dressed in a skeleton. It was awesome. I'll never forget it. Thank you, Randy. Susan Harris. I should've said, Randy is at Northville.
Yes.
And so, Ms. Harris is at Hill and Plain, and she is a very warm and nurturing paraprofessional. She is calm and good-hearted, maintaining poise and a smile with children of all needs. Congratulations. Michelle Cle. Ms. Cle is from Saranoke. Imagine that. She is so creative and a teacher of both academics and character. She is a consummate professional who collaborates with colleagues and works with families so that her students meet success. Congratulations. Amy Marsen. Amy is from Scaticoke. She is the embodiment of what all teachers should strive to be. She is kind, caring, and patient. She makes her students want to do well in class. She is truly an asset to the SMS community. Congratulations. Our next person is not here, unfortunately. Antoinette Montague. She is, what does NSS stand for?
Non-school specific.
What?
Non-school specific.
Oh, non-school specific. That's not an initial that I know. I'm sorry. I read her, oh, because she has speech language. I'm so sorry. Ms. Montague splits her time between both the middle school and the high school as a speech-language professional. She is an exceptional SLP, and her knowledge of language and communication disorders and works collaboratively with general education and special education teachers to help them master their skills. And she's quite an asset to our district. I'm sorry she couldn't be with us, but in a few minutes, we're going to have one of you, Josh or Craig, stand up and be Ms. Montague for the drawing of the special star. We told her that, and she's quite excited, and she hopes one of you brings her good luck, so you can decide which one it is.
We'll give her a hand.
Yes, yay, Ms. Montague. And I learned something new. And finally, Ms. Taylor, Diane Taylor, from New Milford High School. Ms. Taylor has worked hard to improve and develop the Choral Program at New Milford High School. She supports her students and is always willing to put in extra time to offer help. Fabulous last concert, I can't wait for the next one. Drum roll. Here we go. It's Craig. Not that I'm trying to take anything away from the rest of you with Craig drawing the special star.
Okay, on three, open it up. There'll be a star in there, and then, well, all stars.
That's right.
But that's for the car. So, on three, one, two, and three.
Is Morgan?
Five faces.
Awesome. Oh, great. Okay, nice. So, you get a car from Ingersoll, you know, the drill where you get to drive the car
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming this evening.
around?
Thank you. I'll give you a call. Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the order.
All right.
The Board of Education meeting, November 19, 2019, 7:30 at the Saranoke Intermediate
And you get this special banner to put in your car to carry yours to schoolwork, I
School. And our first is the Pledge of Allegiance. Josh, would you mind leading us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
guess.
all.
So, congratulations to all of you.
And thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, our first order of business is our recognition.
Did you get a picture?
At this time, I'll have Dr. Parker.
I will not get it after.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And members of the board, I'm excited tonight. Okay, thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five, six stars of the month. Congratulations. I will say your name, and then if you can come up, I'll read a little bit about you. And now, while I have the floor, at this time, on our agenda, we're going to recognize Superstars, all right? And then you just wait up here until everybody gets here. First, we have Randy Gray. Miss Gray is very involved with her students in helping them achieve success. She is always updating and involving the parents, which is very much appreciated in this fast-paced world we live in. I wish I had a teacher like her. Now, not me, I do, because I went to her classroom. I don't know if you saw, I tweeted out, it was Halloween, and they were learning about bones, and then here she comes, dressed in a skeleton. It was awesome. I'll never forget it. Thank you, Randy. our board members. Susan Harris. I've only known you for a few months, but I must say that they were the most awesome I should've said, Randy is at Northville.
Yes.
And so, Ms. Harris is at Hill and Plain, and she is a very warm and nurturing paraprofessional. She is calm and good-hearted, maintaining poise and a smile with children of all needs. Congratulations. Michelle Cle. Ms. Cle is from Saranoke. Imagine that. She is so creative and a teacher of both academics and character. She is a consummate professional who collaborates with colleagues and works with families so that her students meet success. five months. Congratulations. We have two board members, we actually have three, but unfortunately, Bill Dahl is not Amy Marsen. Amy is from Scaticoke. She is the embodiment of what all teachers should strive to be. She is kind, caring, and patient. She makes her students want to do well in class. She is truly an asset to the SMS community. Congratulations. Our next person is not here, unfortunately. here tonight. Antoinette Montague. Okay. She is, what does NSS stand for? Bill and JT, JT, you want to come up?
Non-school specific.
What?
Non-school specific.
Oh, non-school specific. Have been on the board for four years, and what I have learned in a short amount of time That's not an initial that I know. I'm sorry. I read her, oh, because she has speech language. I'm so sorry. Ms. Montague splits her time between both the middle school and the high school as a speech-language professional. is you're just not on the board, but you serve. She is an exceptional SLP, and her knowledge of language and communication disorders and And they have served our community, our students, our staff with such class, and I've been works collaboratively with general education and special education teachers to help them so impressed, and I will miss you greatly. I know the rest of your colleagues will miss you as well, but congratulations for your master their skills, and she's quite an asset to our district. service to New Milford. I'm sorry she couldn't be with us, but in a few minutes, we're going to have one of We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And Chair Lawson. Boy, I think we need a few clocks. you, Josh or Craig, stand up and be Ms. Montague for the drawing of the special star. David, this is for your dedication and service since 2001, and I got to thinking that that's We told her that, and she's quite excited, and she hopes one of you brings her good 18 years, so that means that our seniors this year, or the seniors last year, you luck, so you can decide which one it is.
We'll give her a hand.
Yes, yay, Ms. Montague. And I learned something new. know, were born the year that you started serving. And finally, Ms. Taylor, Diane Taylor, from New Milford High School. Ms. Taylor has worked hard to improve and develop the Choral Program at New Milford You represent a whole student, so I think that's amazing, and we appreciate you, your High School. She supports her students and is always willing to put in extra time to offer help. Fabulous last concert, I can't wait for the next one. Drum roll. dedication. Here we go. It's been great getting to know you. It's Craig. I know that being on Town Council, we'll still see you around, so we wish you all Not that I'm trying to take anything away from the rest of you with Craig drawing the special star.
Okay, on three, open it up.
the best, and we will miss you.
There'll be a star in there, and then, well, all stars. Okay.
That's right. Okay?
But that's for the car.
Thank you, David.
So, on three, one, two, and three.
That's kind of sad. Is Morgan?
Everything's good. Five faces. Okay, at this time, we'll take a short recess.
Awesome. Oh, great.
Folks, help yourselves to some quick refreshments, and we'll reconvene in a couple moments.
Okay, nice. So, you get a car from Ingersoll, you know, the drill where you get to drive the car around?
I'll give you a call.
Okay. All right. And you get this special banner to put in your car to carry yours to schoolwork, I guess. So, congratulations to all of you.
No, thank you.
Did you get a picture?
I will not get it after.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. And now, while I have the floor, at this time, on our agenda, we're going to recognize our board members. I've only known you for a few months, but I must say that they were the most awesome five months. We have two board members, we actually have three, but unfortunately, Bill Dahl is not here tonight. Okay. Bill and JT, JT, you want to come up? Have been on the board for four years, and what I have learned in a short amount of time is you're just not on the board, but you serve. And they have served our community, our students, our staff with such class, and I've been so impressed, and I will miss you greatly. I know the rest of your colleagues will miss you as well, but congratulations for your service to New Milford. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And Chair Lawson. Boy, I think we need a few clocks. David, this is for your dedication and service since 2001, and I got to thinking that that's 18 years, so that means that our seniors this year, or the seniors last year, you know, were born the year that you started serving. You represent a whole student, so I think that's amazing, and we appreciate you, your dedication. It's been great getting to know you. I know that being on Town Council, we'll still see you around, so we wish you all the best, and we will miss you.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, David. That's kind of sad.
Oh, everything's good. Okay, at this time, we'll take a short recess. Folks, help yourselves to some quick refreshments, and we'll reconvene in a couple moments.[365.14]
Everybody, thank you. We'll reconvene. Okay, at this time, we will entertain any public comment. Chris Stewart?
Hi. I'm here to talk about the band. The New Milford High School Marching Band and Color Guard won the U.S. Bands New England State Championships in their class for the second year in a row. Championships were— I know, they were awesome. And Josh is part of the guard, so he's feeling your love. Championships were held at Noggetuck High School on October 26th. The band and guard successfully defended their state championship with their highest score of the season of 90.84 out of 100, winning all captions in their class, including best music performance, best visual performance, best percussion, and best color guard. They swept. The final performance for the band and guard this year will be on Tuesday, November 26th, at the last football game of the season, which starts at 7:00. So come on down and see the show. Eleven band students and eight chorus students have been selected to participate in this year's Connecticut Music Educators Association Northern Region Festival. The festival will be held at New Britain High School on January 17th and 18th. The best students from the schools in the northern region combine into four large ensembles: band, orchestra, chorus, and jazz band for the festival. After the festival in January, these students will have the opportunity to audition in February for the All-State Festival. It's a two-pager, hold on. There are many ensembles at the high school that are preparing for performances in December. The jazz band, orchestra, concert band, and wind ensemble will perform on Thursday, December 12th, at 7:00 p.m. The chorus and advanced chorus will perform on Thursday, December 19th, at 7:00 p.m. Both concerts will be held in the New Milford High School Theater. They are free of charge, and they're open to the public. Thank you very much for supporting music education in New Milford. And the last concert that I mentioned, that's the Christmas concert, and if you go to any concert, that's one of the best ones that they have. So both of them, both chorus and the music. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll open it up to the floor. A few faces out there. Anybody want to speak? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, PTO report?
Hello. Northville Elementary PTO hosted a baked potato bar dinner for the teachers on the day of conferences, and they have just wrapped up a successful catalog fundraiser. Hill and Plain PTO and the Northville PTO are joining together to hold a movie fundraiser with the Bank Street Theater for a showing of Frozen 2. Hill and Plain PTO hosted veterans for a meal during the Veterans Day Assembly and also provided a dinner for teachers on the day of the conferences. Skatiko PTO helped the librarian and ELE department to kick off the annual Battle of the Books with a pizza party yesterday. SMS PTO was also able to provide many new books for the literacy coach and the library after a very successful book fair. And don't worry if you missed Krispy Kreme this time. Word is that there will be another fundraiser in the spring. Sarah Noble PTO hosted a wonderful luncheon for the veterans for their Veterans Day Assembly, and they also had a very successful book fair, so the PTO will be able to provide many new books to the Library Media Center. The high school PTO is looking forward to hosting a movie night fundraiser with Bank Street Theater in December for a showing of the new Jumanji movie. Grad Party had a very successful event at Haunted Trail at Harry Brook. And this Friday evening, Townwide PTO will be holding the Second Annual Sip and Shop Event. There will be over 30 artisans and vendors to shop from and fabulous raffle prizes. You can feel good about shopping local and supporting scholarships for graduating seniors. Discount cards are also still available and would make a great holiday gift. And thank you very much to David Lawson, Bill Dahl, and JT Shem for your service to our schools all these years, and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Mandy.
Thank you. And our student representatives.
Good evening, Board of Ed. I know it's been a while since I've been here. Soccer's been a crazy year this year.
All right, so let's get this started. November 14th, the high school had the Wingman Presentation brought to us by Ian Hockley. It basically replaced the names program that we've had for a long time. It was very powerful. I know a lot of students are now signing up to become Wingman Student Leaders. Very, very really incredible.
On Friday, the 22nd, the Spanish Honor Society is hosting their annual talent show. So that was a big hit, so I encourage everyone to go see that at 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, I'll be hosting it, so I hope to see you there. On December 5th through 7th, the Drama Club will be promoting on their annual fall production of Clue. They've been working very hard since the beginning of the school year, so definitely go check that out.
Fall sports are now wrapping up, with SWC Finals being about a week and a half ago and the state finals being this Saturday. Our program at the high school as an overall for the fall entirety won the Michaels Cup, which recognizes good sportsmanship on and off the field. And on the— and now, winter sports are coming up with Thanksgiving, so always busy.
As Chris Stewart was saying before, we have a band concert December 12th, followed by a chorus concert on the 19th. And also, as she was saying, this past October, the New Milford High School Marching Band and Color Guard became this year's New England State Champs. So, pretty good.
And now with the college admissions all coming up and early action ending a few weeks ago, at the high school, we have what we call the Incident Decision Week, which is from the December 2nd to the 6th. It's basically six colleges this year, being West Con, Iona College, University of New Haven, Noggetuck Valley Community College, Southern Connecticut, and Central Connecticut. For students that sign up, they can get an onsite decision whether or not they're in the programs that they want or if they're accepted into the college. And that sums it up for this month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Education Minutes, Workshop Meeting Minutes, October 15, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed and abstentions. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the following Board of Education Meeting Minutes, Regular Meeting Minutes, October 15, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. That brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Parker?
Thank you. It's been a busy November. I chunked these into categories. The first category I want to talk about is the community experiences that has happened in November. I was able to attend last Friday a brainstorming session with the Corporation for the New Milford Economic Development Group, which not only the board members, but community members were invited, and it was a very powerful session, and I'm excited to say I'm now on the board of the corporation. I think that'll be a great partnership for our district. You know, the more we can do for New Milford, the more they can do for our district, and I think it'll be really exciting. I attended the CAPS-CAPE Conference last weekend as well and saw, which I'm sure Wendy and David, I guess this was your last year, but you're listed in the program under Years of Service, so there's a 10-year mark, so Wendy, you have a couple more and you'll be on the 20-year, so you have to make sure you go that year for your recognition. But at the conference, I was asked to moderate a session for a Portrait of the Graduate session, and it was very powerful, and I was glad to be a part of that and serve as the moderator. I also got to attend the New Milford High School Athletic Hall of Fame Banquet. It's incredible to see the athletes that we have now, but as well as the ones from years ago. It was a very, very powerful community event. Greg Chagru and I went to Yukon and attended a presentation on school safety, its partnering to prevent school safety put on by the FBI. Very powerful morning. Chief Ceruto and some of his team went as well, and I think it's just reinforcing what we're doing and keeping us all on the same page, and I feel really good about where we're at as a district as far as school safety goes. I got to attend PTO, the district-wide meeting last night. That's always so insightful, and they do so much for our entire community of both staff and students. And then today, I got to attend Rotary. It was recognition for Student of the Month, Maggie Pacento, I believe is how you say her name. She was recognized, and then I— one more thing as far as the community goes, in November, I had one last group of parents from the superintendent survey who had said they wanted to meet. I'd had meetings along the way, and so I had one last group that I met with this month, and it's just—I'll be having more of those, but it was nice to wrap up those people from the survey. School events, I got to go to National Honor Society. Ninety-seven students were inducted into the National Honor Society. You guys were there, it was a very powerful night, and it was quite a flaming event with all of those 97 candles for the National Honor Society induction. It was beautiful. I also got to attend the freshman and sophomore presentation for the Dylan's Wings for Change. Not only was the presentation powerful and the program, but the respect our students showed the entire time for both Jason O'Connor with Youth Services and Ian Hockley, I was just so impressed, as I always am with the behavior of our students, both in the hallways during passing periods, but especially at an event like that. I tell you the saying, you could hear a pin drop, you could have, and it was on carpet. And that tells you how quiet they—it was just—made your heart hurt. And then I'm continuing my school visits. In fact, I got to three today. I've lost count where I'm at. I know I have a spreadsheet that I keep track of where I've gone and what I've done, so that's quite exciting. And then we do have some upcoming events that I want to tell you about. Once tomorrow night, we're having the New Milford High School Parents as Partners Vaping is Smoking presentation here at Sarah Noble at 6:30, if you're available. Looking forward to a good crowd. We also have on December 5th, at the middle school, we're doing a presentation on the assets-based survey that was done previously, the data that we have. They're presenting that to the parents for them to know what it is that they will be, I guess, participating in when it's their turn to do the survey, to see what that final outcome is. And that takes place on December 7th, and I believe it's at 7:00 p.m. Okay?
December 5th.
December—oh, 5th, did I say 7?
Yeah.
Lots of sevens. December 5th at 7:00 p.m. And then just a reminder for the board, on December 3rd, we're looking forward to having Lisa Hammersley, the Executive Director, the Deputy Executive Director of the Connecticut Finance Project, to come and do just some refresh with us as far as school finance. Here we are in budget season. I was very impressed with them when I met with them, and I thought, oh, I want to share this with my board, so it's exciting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Comes to me. Okay, here's your last comments. Yeah, we are now in budget season, so any ideas or concerns, please relay them to Dr. Parker, as far as that's concerned. The only other thing I wanted to say was to the board and those that have attended the meetings over the years, and that is, I'm looking at this gavel, and I'm proud to say that I've never used it, and I don't intend to. And I think that's a testament, not just to all the board members, but to those that attend the meetings. And I know there's a lot of talk in our country about civility and this, that, and the other, and being courteous and respectful. Well, to all of you, I believe you embody it. There's no question about it. So with that being said, happy Thanksgiving. Okay, we'll move on to the committee reports. Brian, Facilities?
Sure. It was a productive meeting. I believe it went 27—oh, until 7:27, which is long for my meetings. And we discussed—and on the agenda for tonight is the turf field and Celtic Energy, so I won't bore you with those two, other than we—on Tuesday, Dr. Parker, Anthony, myself, and Kevin met with the mayor to start working towards getting an MOU with Celtic Energy, and we'll be discussing that today. There was a steam leak in Lilis Building, unfortunately, and unfortunately, in the area where it happened, there needed to be asbestos abatement, so that also comes up tonight, I believe. And we also discussed the budget drivers, which have not changed since our last meeting, and those are all in the minutes.
Thank you. Wendy, Operations?
Actually, my colleague, Brian, graciously chaired the meeting for me.
And it's now on my resume that I've chaired the Operations Committee.
I was going to text you for—
So I guess I can give that report.
Sweet.
Again, it was—sure, it was another good, productive meeting. Really, just about everything in that meeting is on tonight's agenda, though Mr. Corpo did present some title grants that she received, and it's great that all the work that's done to get more money into our budget and money into our schools. Some of those title grants focus on professional learning, EOL instruction, bilingual instruction after-school for the Wingman Program. So really, those grants are really essential for the school functioning, so that's— And also, one of my favorites is we also—the health inspection for our cafeterias passed with flying colors, and Sandra does a tremendous job with that. I think our lowest score was a 98, and I think that's fantastic. Other than that, not much to report out on Operations.
Less—quite a bit, thank you. And thank you. Tammy, Policy?
Okay. So we have one policy on the agenda tonight for first review, and that is the 6146 graduation requirements. Now, we recently approved our graduation requirements. It was changed last year to align with PA 1742, where the PE credit was lowered to one credit, and the health requirement was raised to one credit. As a result, after this year, New Milford High School does not have enough staff to currently meet that demand. Mr. Chagru presented a solution to amend the policy to reduce the PE requirement from two credits to one for the classes of 2021 and 2022. It would still meet the state requirements, it would align with what we're doing moving forward. If the board chooses not to do this, the only option is that we would need to hire two additional PE health teachers to meet the demands just for those two years. So it's only a two-year problem, and then obviously, we would have to let go of those teachers. So there was a lot of discussion about, obviously, not doing that and moving forward by adjusting the budget. But anyway, when we get to that—I'm sorry, the policy. So when we get to that, we can, you know, have our first discussion on that. There are two policies on the agenda tonight for second review. 1700, possession of firearms on school property prohibited, and 1800, animals on school property. So hopefully, you've had a chance to read those. There was some changes to the animals on school property due to legal suggesting that we do some, you know, word changes, so you just might want to take a look at those. They are highlighted in red, so you can see actually what is being changed each time we look at it. And the regulation for animals on school property was also reviewed. We don't approve that, but it was reviewed that evening. We began discussing the 9,000 series review. All of you know that that is pretty much—talks about board responsibilities and roles, and since we will be having additional people join the board, it's kind of good for us to always review those policies. A discussion did surface about the protocol for the board to follow if there is a concern about a member not following guidelines. Something that was discussed is maybe having some kind of a seminar or a session or a workshop where legal could come in and discuss the responsibilities of the board. And I do remember when we all five came on the board four years ago, there was a discussion. It was—I found it extremely helpful, because it's a lot of responsibility, and I think that we should—if we can, do something like that. I think everybody would find it helpful, especially the new people joining us. Okay, the remaining policies on the agenda were not discussed. Due to time restraints, they will be added to future agendas, and the December policy meeting was canceled, and a future date will be TBD. And that's all I have.
Thank you. JT?
I thought I'd hear about miniature horses.
Oh, I know miniature horses.
Stay tuned.
Absolutely.
Thank you, David. For Committee on Learning, again, a pretty ambitious agenda that we had on the 5th of November. Just wanted to go through a few things. I think our student representatives spoke to the Wingman Program that happened recently with regards to social-emotional learning. Sounds like it was a successful program, and also a good phase out of the names program, too, and we spoke to that a little bit, the Committee on Learning. You'll see tonight in your packets, the Western Connecticut Coalition Mini-Grant Survey is included, and the request there is to help provide some really valuable information about vaping and kind of an add-on to the Student Asset Survey. I think the Search Institute survey did not include these questions when it was administered, so I know Jason O'Connor, I think I seen about that, right, is here on behalf of the Can to speak a little bit to that. I think that's why he's right here. So thank you, Jason. So when we get to there, you'll see some of the ambitiousness of this was Committee on Learning, there were 16 different curricula. Those are here for your review, and I want to thank Alicia for taking the time to, you know, really push those forward, get them all vetted, and get us to a place where we could bring them forward to the Committee on Learning. Something I had mentioned, and Alicia might look at me a little funny if I say this, but, you know, moving forward, we were looking to try to clear some of this out of Committee on Learning, bring it to full board, so the new board doesn't, you know, have, you know, this backlog of curriculum to work through. So part of that motivation for us to do that was such, but I also say maybe we look forward to a workshop model. I'll just leave that as an idea for future boards to consider. I also appreciate two budget drivers you're going to see also in your packets. I think you've already seen it. It's really, I think, a good practice for the board to look at how we talk about budget drivers before we talk about budget, right? So I know that's been a newer practice for the board, and one of the ones you'll see for Committee on Learning is taking a look at bilingual teachers and even a coordinator. And I think it's important for the public to know that once we reach this threshold of 20 students who have a—share a dominant language, it requires our district to then have EL support for those students. So we'll have that in, I believe, two schools, right? And that will be a budget driver. So we will see that bilingual piece later on in the packet. I think it's listed as an item of information, but surely that will be a budget discussion come January. And— What's that?
It's also listed, I believe, as discussion.
It is, okay. And I can't leave without saying thank you to my fellow subcommittee members for the last four years. I had the privilege of sharing, you know, working with people around this table at Policy. I really appreciate that time for three years. And I want to thank Angie and Tammy and Bill, who's not with us tonight, but for really doing a great job keeping our focus on learning in the Committee on Learning. And I think that it goes without saying, but I will say it, thank you, Alicia, for being that steadfast, you know, support to all of us to get us to really focus on learning and always keeping in mind the education that we do here and making us a board of education when it comes to Committee on Learning. So thank you for the time working, and again, supporting our educators. You know, I think it's really important that we maintain a focus on really well-developed, well-vetted curriculum and supporting our teachers through that. So it's really a strong support structure, and not every district does as good a job with curriculum as we do. So I think that remains a piece that I'm really proud to, you know, see the work that you've done and continue with that work. So that being said, I'm good. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, JT. Eileen, at Advance?
It's a hard act to follow. Nothing really exciting. The only thing I did note this month was they had municipal leaders for the cities and towns in the area that it serves, and they had it at their new facility in Plymouth, so they could again—once again, show it off. That was the excitement.
Kate? Actually, you heard a lot about what Kate has been working on, and that's translating the newly passed statutes of the last legislative session, and they explained to our administration office the impact, the impact they have on our policies, and that's why you're seeing many of these coming up. The other thing with Kate is they are sponsoring a new board member's seminar. It's coming up this early December, I believe, and I know many of you went to that before, and I encourage our newly elected board members to go there. And that's what we have for that. And Eileen, we'll turn to the Magnet School.
Magnet School, the night before the proposed meeting, it was canceled.
Okay, you're doing really well there, aren't you?
They're going to—they haven't even mentioned rescheduling it yet, so whatever. When it happens, I'll make every effort to be there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Discussion and Possible Action portion. I need a motion to approve Exhibit A, Personnel Certified, Non-Certified Appointments, Resignations, and Leaves of Absence as of November 19, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you. Our monthly reports. I need a motion to approve monthly reports, Revised Budget Position dated October 31, 2019, Purchase Resolution D. 728, and Request for Budget Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on those items? Angie?
On the purchase resolution— Naviance for 592045. I had asked at the budget hearings about possibly upgrading that to a more inclusive package. Did we check into that?
So at this time, we're working to connect Naviance between the middle school and the high school.
Okay.
That conversation has just begun, but I can look into seeing if this is the upgrade or if it's just the package that they've had previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Wendy?
If we could go ahead and take a look at our—just a comment on the Capital Reserve memo, which now appears on all of our statements, which I do appreciate. There's been some small amounts of money that have been redeposited, which doesn't require any action due to the actual expenditure being less than the estimate, correct?
Correct.
And with that being said, the amount that's there, do you anticipate that amount to fluctuate anymore, barring the sense that we've already—other than we've drawn out the 352? So will that number change between now and the action after final audit and the town council, or after final audit and that number is our end-of-year balance is put into that account? Do you anticipate that to change?
The only change that would be here would be—this is an interest-bearing account on the town side of the fence, so there would be interest associated with that, with this account, but no other changes until the audit is finalized.
And I think it's important to know, it's very helpful when you can trace our minutes and see the capital reserve requests that are identified dollar-for-dollar, and then you can see an expenditure like this that perhaps comes in less than what we calculate. That number is parceled out and put in there like that, so I think it's extremely transparent, and I appreciate that.
And just for clarification, the updated revised budget position, the only revision is to that page 404, to break out the capital reserve on the bottom left, a little more clear, and then— And then, in the bottom right, the turf field replacement. There was comments at Operations Subcommittee, whether or not this was Board of Ed only or town only, so, or commingled. So I tried to make that a little more clear, that this is just the Board of Ed portion when we're talking about turf field replacement.
Can I expand upon that? Because I had asked that question in Operations as well. So the number that you have for the turf field, has there been any town contribution in that account? Up to date?
Not to this particular account. I've heard that the town has an account that they've made contributions to. I don't have access to that information, though.
But would that, would a town contribution to the turf field isn't in the same account number in UNIS? Wouldn't that go into the same account?
I don't believe so. I believe that this one is specifically earmarked for Board of Ed contribution.
And so if the town makes a contribution, I just want to be clear on this because we're trying to build up, obviously, funding for something that we're going to be hit nine or 10 years from now. And it's a collaborative effort. We have a UNIS account set up for that reimbursement. That UNIS account is only identified to the Board of Ed, but the town has its own separate. It was my understanding that they were going to be put together as one.
I can't view that information in UNIS just the way it's set up.
I don't have a problem with it. I just want to be clear with it.
There might be an overall account that ours is a sub-account for that you see here. I believe that to be the case, but I don't have access to it on reports.
And we can only, in all fairness, you can only pretty much answer the question on behalf of the Board of Ed because you're here for the Board of Ed. So I appreciate that.
Joe, is this, Tammy has a follow-up to the discussion at hand? Would you mind yielding?
I'm not on page six yet. I'm on page four. But go ahead, Tammy.
I just, I just have a question. The capital reserve, the 344014, that is current, what's there? After the audit, how much do we believe it's going to be added to that?
There should be another 310,000 added to that.
And that, and the audit usually finishes up when?
Presented at the January Town Council.
Unless they ask for a mention.
So it's, so it's soon. It should be there soon.
But it's important to note, is it fair that the action has already been granted by the two other bodies?
Correct.
That should, once that audit is signed off on, that money has already been earmarked into the capital reserve so we don't have to go through those acting bodies to get the money put into that?
So it'll be even sooner than what we normally get it because...
It's not that it's so much sooner, it's just that it's been taken care of. So that's one less hurdle during budget season that we have to, the town, meaning we, that we have to watch.
The other question that I had is, I believe that we had 150,000 in our turf field, but I think that's because we've allocated 50,000 from this. So that, once that's finalized, once the audit is finalized, that 50,000 will be added. And I also believe that the town also put 50, another 50,000 in it, but it was also from their...
If they did, it would follow the same rule. So the amount you see here that the Board of Ed has contributed currently is 58,735. The little bracketed part there is that there's another 50,000 to be added.
Yes.
So if the town is making a contribution off of their 1819 fiscal year in balance, as we are here, you would also see that after the audit is published.
Okay.
Couple points. I will always continue to go on about us tapping into this capital reserve and running it down. Someday, we're going to have to go to council and ask for additional money when something comes up. A little as Boilermix, perfect example of ongoing problems that we need to continually be cognizant of. Turf field accounts, and it's probably for another time, but our fees for banners and stuff is minimal because we're not consciously going after our local businesses to advertise there. And I had a conversation this weekend, and I'll bring it up whoever again, about a significant-sized corporation in town that's more than willing to put up a banner. And we're just not putting an effort into it. And maybe that needs to go up through ED and the principal, but we need to work on that. I would also venture to say that the money that the council puts in for turf fields has to be under a separate line in the budget for audit and accounting purposes. But it'd be real nice if we can inquire with the town and find out what they do or don't have, so we have a total overall understanding of what's there. We're never going to have, the way this town runs, we're never going to have sufficient funds to replace those fields. And again, I think we're going to probably be able to get easily 12 years out. And so the more we do now between us and the town to defray that cost, and that's what we'll be doing at the 10 to 12-year mark, just defraying it. And if we have the money at that point, I probably will not be involved in politics. I'll come back and apologize. That was it for now.
Those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Celtic Energy, I'm going to turn to Dr. Parker for this.
This is just a follow-up to what Mr. McCauley shared on Monday. We went to speak with the mayor and hammer out the questions that we had from our attorney regarding the MOU. We came to agreement about our partnership, what the expectations are of the board, the town, everything that we had discussed, you had discussed as a board, what we had been presented. And so at the end of that meeting, we just couldn't get the turnaround for the MOU tonight, within 24 hours. But the attorneys are working on it, and I would anticipate it happening probably by the end of the week. There were lots of emails going back and forth. We just couldn't get, we couldn't get a time. Today, they were in court, that sort of thing. But we will have the MOU for you, and I think it addresses the concerns, the questions that were brought up as far as, you know, what goes, if it's Board of Ed money, does it go back to Board of Ed instead of the town, that sort of thing? And I think it'll be very clear. In the meantime, we did speak with Celtic and said, please move forward with the audits, getting that established. And so that happened immediately after our meeting yesterday and told them that, you know, we were, we were good with the contract and please don't wait on the MOU. That's between the town and the board. And so they're, I guess, moving forward with the specs for ESCO for December so that we can get started on those audits.
I raised some significant concerns at the Subcommittee on this issue. I got the overall impression from Celtic Energy and the way the MOU was initially drafted that they're only answering to the town council and they really, almost an arrogance toward the Board of Ed. My opinion was, we just won't let you on our property. I'm hoping we got past some of that with the mayor and the council and Celtic Energy, Celtic or Celtic?
Celtic.
That's the Irish in me.
McCauley does the same thing.
We'll see what that says. But I was not impressed with the MOU and their attitude. They seem to indicate they work for the town, which is only a third of the community's money. We control 70% of it. They better step up and impress us. Otherwise, I'm going to be difficult about this.
I'll see if I can help you out.
I don't like their attitude and approach, what I saw in Subcommittee. So I'm going to stay on this. Well, let's see what happens at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, any other questions or comments? So there will be no motion at this time? Moving on to policies for second review. 1700, possession of firearms on school property prohibited. Two, 1800, animals on school property. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
I have to let go of the 1700A firearms issue. I have to leave that to the state legislature. I just, not from our aspect, I just, from the legislative point of view, it's poorly, poorly worded. I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
I just have to make a comment about the miniature horses. I was a caretaker of a farm, and the animal that I was the most afraid of was the miniature horse.
They are, they are real worry.
Okay.
Sorry, that was...
All right, well, thank you both. Thank you both, gentlemen. And E, policy for first review, 6146, graduation requirements. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Sir?
I'm full myself tonight. I had two cookies, that's why. It's a good thing I didn't have coffee.
Yeah, work, I guess, for Joe.
After the last Subcommittee, I understand that the predicament we're in. And as much as I am against reducing the number of graduation requirements, I can understand it, just to get through this staffing issue for a two-year period, I will always have a problem with the fact that we're taking away from physical education, we could go into health, and put people on a chair versus getting them out of their seats. For what?
Question, just for clarification. This formalizes the previously approved credit numbers, right?
It aligns them with the...
Aligns it, okay. Thank you.
Just for those credits.
Yep. I mean, it does, I think it's also worth noting too, because, you know, we really focused on the class of 2023, right? So those are our current ninth graders. And that was, the focus there was on the graduation standards for them. We've since now taken a look at our current sophomores and juniors and adjusted those to 25 credits as well. We were over-credited in comparison to what the new state requirements are for graduation. So if anything, three of our four graduating, or three of our four classes right now at the high school are at that 25-credit threshold. But it's, the juniors and seniors are composed a little bit differently because we're still using kind of our older model. But the new pathways allow a lot more flexibility. So again, we had gotten some public, you know, pressure to say we were over-credited, right? But there were some other schools that were under-credited, you know, 20 credits in some neighboring schools where we were at 26. So now it brings us to 25. There's really no cost savings. But the discussion we had was about cost avoidance because it would have required us to jump to two more health teachers.
Just for two years.
Or P teachers, just for those two years.
The two-year is for the freshman sophomore to get into a line of this?
The two years is for the junior sophomore.
Junior sophomore.
Yes, for classes 21 and 2022, graduating class.
All right, we'll get another crack at it again. And the Western Connecticut Coalition Mini-Grant Survey. Okay. I need a motion to approve the Western Connecticut Coalition Mini-Grant Survey. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? We have an expert out here.
Why not? This is a significant problem nationwide. And I will honestly say tragically, Washington DC decided to go a little soft on this this week. There was such an effort to get away from cigarettes in this country. It did work for Philip Morris at one time. So I know that environment, and it's just, there's no good to come from it. And there's no good here. And this is a significant problem we have here in our schools. Because every school has it. And so, and we need to gather whatever information we can and honestly come down hard on this. Because what we've done, we have done here with vaping is return our children to smoking cigarettes in a different format. And it's tragic that we've had tremendous flexibility with this issue and where it's concerned, as far as, not in our school systems, but everybody else. Comes down to commerce. I can't believe I'm saying that, but...
I think it's actually a tool for us to stay on top of things, not just for the school, but the community as a whole. And whereas with other issues, we didn't really get on board right at the get-go. So I think it's more of a proactive approach, although you could argue reactive as well. But we can certainly set things up. We have the new New Milford Can as well, that's working on things as well. So I hope we coordinate with them as well. Is that true? That we'll be working with other community agencies?
So Western Connecticut Coalition is the regional RAC, and they get the state money from DMS.
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, sorry, I'm standing up here, sorry. Jason O'Connor, and thanks for having me. I'm the vice chair of New Milford Can. And so as I was saying, New Milford Can is the local prevention council who is governed by Western Connecticut Coalition. So that's where New Milford Can gets their money to put forth efforts like this. In that sense, they're always looking for the strategic prevention framework in that we have no data on our vaping trends, behaviors, and attitudes. We unfortunately missed the cut in our last survey to obtain any information on that. So with that, Western Connecticut is looking at the LPCs, New Milford Can, to try and gather data using any kind of means necessary. And so we're looking at the school system for that. So once we have the assessment, we can start building capacity, implementation, evaluation, and see where we're going with that. So we're really looking to the school to partner with this initiative. So if you have any questions, again, we're looking at youth perception, youth attitudes, behaviors, also adult attitudes, behaviors, perception of harm, where they're obtaining e-cigarettes, basically just any kind of information we can get to utilize. And it is, unfortunately, like you said, it's a shame that there was so much effort put forth to essentially stop smoking within teen populations, and now we effectively hook them on nicotine. So even when, hopefully, these e-cigs do get banned for youth, we may have to deal with the epidemic of youth addicted to nicotine and what those trends are going to be for us. So again, the more information we can get and the more partnerships, again, like you can said, building with the community is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Yes.
Two meetings ago, I suggested to the report that peer pressure is a good positive way to change behavior, which we don't like, which is the vaping. And so I made a list of things that we could do. Gave them to Mr. Shagru and Dr. Carey, and we'll look at that again. And in the conference with Mr. Shagru, I said, so, you know, how many kids do you think vape? You know, a 1,600 population, you know, we got 3, 400 vaping? No, he said it's out of 10, six kids are vaping. So that's scary, six out of 10 are vaping.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those in favor? And those opposed? Can I redo the vote again? Those in favor? Okay, there we go. Thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason. You still there? There you are. Okay. I need a motion to approve the following curricula.
Take them on.
Okay, here we go. K through 12, library media. K through 2, I knew that. First one out. Okay, K 2, library media. Three, grades three through five, library media. Grades six through eight, library media. Grades nine through 12, library media. See, I could have done it all wrong. Science fiction, CP. Theater workshop and performance. Experiencing poetry, physics, CP. Physics honors, AP microeconomics, introduction to business, grade six art, grade seven art, grade eight art, early childhood, and statistics, CP.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? And opposed? Can you do that again? Those in favor? Okay, there we go. Thank you. Okay, turf field. I need a motion to approve the use of facilities fee schedule as proposed.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one thing. As I was going through all the paperwork here, I had circled the org type. And then when I got to the facility minutes, it was defined. So I thank you for that because I do remember seeing that at some point. If we are going to put this out, I think it's important that we do define what the org types are so that people understand why certain charges are applied to certain org types and not others in this one document. Just for transparency's sake.
Okay, we can do this.
And Anthony, another question, clarification. With the schools' allocated fund for this, is it interest-bearing?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I'd like to say, would you check that out for me? But you can have to do it mighty quickly. And if we could, if it's not, if we could investigate, if we could arrange for that to be, assuming there's no objections.
Just a long time coming. Excellent that this is being done, so.
Can I add to that, please?
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank the committee, who, Mr. Manret and the members, and even our students who are on that committee, who take time out of their day to come and give their input in some of these discussions. So when that's brought forward to subcommittee, it's been vetted properly. And there was some research on comparisons and where we are and why we're recommending it. It's certainly not to make a profit, it's to cover the losses. And it's to still make sure that the field is inclusive, but to close that gap a little bit on making it inclusive and cover the losses. So I appreciate, you know, the meetings throughout the year to follow up on where we're going with that. And I think it's the right move to go ahead and change these days.
Those in favor? Thank you. Number 11, items for information and discussion, field trip report.
Just a question. This doesn't include transportation, where's the train? These trips here? Don't...
I don't know what you're referencing.
No number on it. Approval field trips, November 2019.
Which one? Which number?
Well, just overall. How are they covering the transportation costs of these? Where does that come from?
Is it in here? I think it's part of it.
It is.
You can see it in the breakdown, if you have the actual sheet.
Right. But it describes, it's the actual general idea of the trip. And if transportation is required on that trip, the price is inclusive of that?
Correct. I have to see that even before it gets approved so I can see the total cost to students less any PTO contributions or other contributions that may come in the way of student.
That's where they cover the transportation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a per-student cost?
Yes.
So the $1,700 that it's costing the band, is there, that's a lot of money for a parent to pick. So how are they offsetting that? Because...
I believe what happens is, well, they have to submit it to me so that they can get everything planned out. And then they do do fundraising leading up to the trip, so the cost could be reduced. But what you see here is really what the trip could cost, less, you know, anything that they...
So there is something being done for the, to help these kids get there where their parents aren't putting a $2,000 bill?
They're always trying really hard to...
That's a lot of money.
If I'm correct, there has to be an estimate expenditure when we show what is submitted.
Yes, there does, yes.
And so that's what you're saying, the estimate expenditure to make sure that the overall dollar amount is provided and the revenue would offset that from fundraising.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. And B, 1,800, animals on school property regulation. I believe that was hammered out rather well in committee.
It was. We normally don't put regulations on for, but I appreciate, no, I think it's a great thing. You know, so there were some questions on the regulation. The policy committee said, this is great that we're looking at this policy, but having a policy and enforcing a policy are two different things. And so what is the regulation? And really, the details spell out the success of the policy.
Yeah, I know. When it comes to policies and law, Joe, you'll know, there's, they're always complex no matter how simple they appear. So, okay, and budget drivers. As I mentioned previously, we do, are aware of some of the budget drivers, this, that, and the other. Candy?
I want to thank you for this document because it really does drive home what we're going to be very shortly diving into with our need for, you know, money to cover certain things. I have a question, actually, on number one. The EL bilingual, the second bullet states that the district has to absorb this cost because we didn't receive the Title III immigration grant this year. Is there a reason why we didn't? Okay.
So the criteria for the Title III immigration grant relies on the number of students that you had that are considered immigrants in, within the New Milford Public School System two years back. And so previous, the previous two years qualified for us, that qualified us for that grant, but the preceding two years will not.
So we have less students categorized?
As, under the definition of immigrants, yes. And we've looked at that data. We've been looking at it monthly just to see if there's been any impact to the numbers, but there aren't, in a way that would allow us to apply again. And we haven't seen the grant come forward again from the federal government, so I don't know if that's actually a grant that would be renewed.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
I think this is helpful. I think it should be noted that these are very important conversations to have, and we try and have them obviously before budget comes out, but this is all still fluid, it's all a draft. We don't know. But what, you know, one portion of this that, well, they're all important, extremely important, not only because of the items and what we're trying to achieve, but the dollar amounts that are attached to them and some, you know, for example, the health insurance. You know, the town made great strides to really work together to keep that down. And when the average trend is 10 or 11%, and we're going to open our budget books and right out of the gate, you're going to see $428,000 increase, that's not because of anything other than health insurance. There's nothing we can do at the Board of Education at all to change that number unless there's some miracle and that number changes for our actuary. So I think it's important that the community know that some of these large numbers that come in, it's not for not trying or not trying to maneuver things. We certainly could have faced 10 or 11% increase. So it's a tad frustrating to know that before you even begin your first meeting here, you've got over $400,000 of expenditures that you're going to have to try and offset.
Well, again, I think one of the things over the years, okay, the aggressive negoti, well, mutual negotiations and the switch of health plans has been a cost avoidance. And that number, that 400,000 would be astronomical, I would wager.
You're looking at at least double.
At least, I was going to say 750 to a million.
If you're looking at, you know, 5% to 11%, you're looking at, this board would have faced almost $900,000 worth of health insurance increases. Is that clear?
Yeah, can I just add one thing? The memo here says...
I just wanted to say that it's these things over time that make our budgets cost avoidance in a lot of ways. And it's not really apparent. It's not like you just say, oh, we can chop a million right off because, well, we saved it.
Is that a real line item issue?
But anyway, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to interject here that we're expecting at least a 5%.
That's what I mean, at least.
So it's a minimum of that $428,000. We won't know until we have the full reports released from the actuaries, which won't be until like the first week of December.
That's how I read it, I was a tad frustrated because I read it as, at the minimum, we're looking at 5%. No matter what we do.
Yeah, no, exactly. And that's a good number considering, I mean, we've been in double digits before. So, Angie?
The student information system, is that like our attendance and student personal information?
Great book, yep, portal.
Okay, and we have staff, all-inclusive, so we have secretaries, teachers, we have on the committee, associate reforming?
Yes, yes. About five members per school, started with the principals, and then we had a list that we started with, people we thought would be good for, and then they revised the list and then we went from there. So a few people per school, about five, including secretaries and guidance, but we try to cover everyone.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I asked a lot in subcommittee on these budget drivers, so I'll leave it to tonight. I have a lot of questions out there, hopefully respond to them. But it's significant, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, I need a motion that the board enter into executive session in order to discuss: One, the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the New Milford Board of Education and Teamsters Local 677 Food Nutrition Service Employees. Two, the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the New Milford Board of Education and Teamsters Local 677 Custodians and Maintenance. And three, the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the New Milford Board of Education and the New Milford, and the New Milford Board of Education Nurses Local 1303 154 of Council Four. And to invite into said session Dr. Carey Parker and Mr. Anthony Gialoni.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You're going to go in and discuss them all at one time?
Yes. We will be voting separately, however.
I'm going to abstain. I'm going to stay out of it.
You're going to recuse yourself from the entire session?
Yes, only because you're going to do it all collectively. For the record, my next-door neighbor is a school nurse who is on negotiating committee and it is too close, so...
That's your choice, but you could also, they will be discussed individually, so when that portion comes out, you are allowed to leave.
I could do that. I could abstain.
It's whatever, I just want to make sure you're clear on the protocol.
But I am, I'm not going to participate in the discussion.
Well, I think there'll be...
I think there's err on the side of caution.
Yep.
Okay. I didn't want to leave you out of all of it.
Well, actually, you'll be leaving two of us out of it.
What?
You'll be leaving two of us out of it.
Right. But just to be clear, if there is a concern of conflict, first of all, that transparency is most appreciated, you have four discussions here. So you are allowed to go in, listen to one portion, and come out and excuse yourself from that, and vote accordingly to what you have heard. So I don't want anyone to feel like they have to be excluded from the entire executive session.
I thought it was going home.
That's right, Joe.
That's right, Joe.
I know.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between the New Milford Board of Education and Teamsters Local 677 Food and Nutrition Services employees as discussed in executive session and to further move that the board delegate the chairperson of the board the authority to execute said agreement on behalf of the board.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? I need a motion to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between the New Milford Board of Education and Teamsters Local 677 custodians and maintainers as discussed in executive session and to further move that the board delegate to the chairperson of the board the authority to execute said agreement on behalf of the board.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between
the New Milford Board of Education and the NMBOE Nurses Local 1303154 of Council Four as discussed in executive session and to further move that the board delegate to the chairperson of the board the authority to execute said agreement on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Any discussion? Those in favor? opposed and abstaining.
Bill is not here. I know he used to jump, but I know.
I was actually going to use the gavel, but they took it away.
You threw your hand on the table.
So, oh well. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, David.